Okay Chair, I've got my devices rolling and the floor is yours.
Thank you Anthony. Hello and welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Morro Bay Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, February 16th. It is 6:00 PM. We are holding this meeting via teleconference in accordance with COVID-19 protocols. With that, I will establish a quorum. We are missing Mr. Engraffia but we have the other four commissioners in attendance. And I will establish a quorum and call the meeting to order. And I would like to begin with a moment of silence if we could, please. Okay, I hope that was long enough for everybody. Quickly, I'll just announce that if you're a member of the public and you wish to participate, you may watch on either cable channel 20 or as streamed on the city website. And also you may view the agenda on the city website and there are several ways to engage in public comment via telephone, via the Zoom meeting and several methods there. So please participate if you desire. And with that, I will move on to Planning Commissioner announcements. Do we have any announcements? Okay, I'm going to scroll back and forth. Sorry, I see nobody's hand raised. So we will move on to public comment. This is a part of the meeting where we typically accept public comment for items not on the agenda. Anthony, is there anybody in the queue wishing to speak to public comment?
Thank you Chair. I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
Okay, we will give it a couple more moments just to make sure nobody wishes to speak. Going once, going twice.
No hands raised. No hands raised sir.
No hands raised. Okay, we'll continue on. Members of the public, since we are kind of new to this, if you wish to speak to something not on the agenda, we will try and accommodate the best we can, given the new technologies we're all trying to get used to. So anyway, pressing on, we'll move right on into the consent calendar, item A. Did everybody have a chance to read and comment on, or does anybody wish to pull any of the items on the consent calendar? Seeing no objections, do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of accepting the consent calendar?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Four ayes. Bill's hand was raised, so we'll call that an aye. Four ayes, okay. Moving on, we have 4-0, consent calendar accepted and filed, I guess is the right word. We'll move on to item B, public hearings. Ms. Hubbard?
Okay, here we go. I'm going to share my screen for the presentation. Okay, can you see a presentation?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. So this is a major modification to extend the term of an existing conditional use permit. Site information, it's a city-owned site. It's zoned M1PD, I for interim, SP, which in light industrial plan development interim use, specific plan area. Interim uses can be approved with a limited term conditional use permit, which is what happened on this site, including a five to 10-year term or until the site is needed for its primary purpose. In this case, this is the Morro Bay Bike Park located on, the address is on Little Morro Creek, but it's more prominently displayed and noticed on Main Street. In April 2015, it was approved by city council for use as BMX bike park for a period of five years. The club installed facilities and are operating the project, it's Morro Bay Bike Park Group, and they are operating it under a memorandum of understanding with the city. The current request is extension of the duration of the interim use permit. And staff recommends duration until such time as the city needs the site for the primary purpose. Alternatives are a fixed term between five and 10 years. And there is no change in the facility or operations from the existing use. And staff recommends approval of the major modification to extend the duration of the conditional use permit by adopting Planning Commission Resolution 03-21, which includes findings and conditions of approval. And just an added note, we received three public comments. I believe they were provided to you and put on the website today. And they were all very positive in support of the extension.
Very good. Is that it? Well, does anybody on the commission have any questions for Ms. Hubbard? No. No questions from Jen, Susan, Bill. Everybody's kind of shaking their head. I think this is kind of a slam dunk project, I agree. Okay, so we'll go ahead and bring it back to the commission. We'll open it up for public comment. Do we have anybody in the queue that wishes to speak to this item?
Chair, I do not see any raised hands in the queue.
Okay, well this may be our quickest meeting of all time. We're gonna, I'll give about 10 more seconds and see if anybody wishes to speak. Okay, seeing none, we'll bring it back. We will close public comment, bring it back to the commission. Does anybody on the commission wish to comment on this project? Susan?
I went by there and looked at it today and it's clean, it's well managed, there's no trash. They have a bench for free helmets for people to use if they didn't bring their helmet. I've talked to a few people in the neighborhood, live up Little Morro Creek Road, asked if there'd been any issues with parking or traffic, and there were none. Guess the only thing I'd be curious is if in the years that it's been there, have there been any concerns or issues raised with the police department, anything like that? I mean, I haven't heard anything. Next door is quiet, you know, so it seems like it's a great little place for people of all ages in our community to have some outdoor recreation. So I'm a big yes.
Very good. Does anybody else wish to comment? Just a quick one from me. Any liability issues at all Nancy, that's happened over the past five years?
Not that I'm aware, but Bonnie Johnson, who is with the Morro Bay Police Department, is the representative for the bike park group and she is on this call. So if you have any specific questions, I think she could probably address those.
I'm wondering injuries lawsuits, that kind of thing, anything that we would be aware of?
I think not involving the city that I'm aware of.
I'm not aware of anything that's happened out there either.
Got it. And one last question. This is good Nancy, for another five years. Is that what we're looking at?
Well, you have a choice. A fixed term between five or 10 years, or you can just approve the resolution, the way I drafted it, is until there is another use for the site.
So that would be without limit then?
It's without limit. I mean, things change and the site is owned by the city and it has a primary purpose that is not BMX bike park. So if things change and that is a high-demand area and the city needs to use it for something else, then they would have to terminate the agreement.
Got it, thank you.
I would also note that while Commissioner Engraffia is not here, he did send his support forward for the bike park project and continuing it forward.
Are you happy comments or, I'm sorry, go ahead Bill. Go ahead Jen.
Okay, Bill, you can finish if you have another comment. I was just-
Take a motion, but you know-
Okay. Well, all I have to offer is my support. You know, I know a lot of kids that use it and you know, just like Susan said, you pass by, you see kids out there having a great time. If anything, kids really need that recreation, especially outdoor recreation right now. I would never want to stop that if it's possible. So yeah, I'm also in agreement with it.
Perfect, perfect. My only comments are the same. I mean, I've been here as long as this has been, been in Morro Bay as long as this has been going on and nearly a bad word have I heard about this bike park and it seems like nothing but a positive for the community. So I mean, no, I have nothing negative to say and offer my full support as well, so. Alright, well I guess we're to the part of the meeting where we can accept a motion. I guess the only thing to discuss would be Nancy's decision, I guess, to make this an unlimited type of situation or a five to 10-year type situation. So whatever we think that would be. I would just be in favor of letting that be up to Scott or you know, whoever is the community development director. That's my thought, I mean just-
I would note that because it's a conditional use permit, it can always be brought back to the Planning Commission at any time if we have concerns or questions or need to bring it back for some reason. So you know, that ability is always there with this type of permit process.
I think the unlimited is the smart way to write it and so I'm very supportive. And I'm happy to make a motion to approve. Okay, do we have any discussion on the timeframe or are we all kind of nodding our heads that unlimited seems the way to go? Alright, last seen four nodding of heads. So Bill, if you want to make a motion? Happy to make the motion as written. Do we need to read the motion on the record?
I don't know Scott, we typically do. I mean, I don't know how it's officially supposed to go.
We move approval of the project and adoption of the resolution.
So stated.
Okay, that's sufficient.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second to approve the project as written. Scott, would you mind calling the question, or Ms. Hubbard? I'm sorry, would you mind calling the question?
I will. Commissioner Ford?
Yes.
Commissioner Roshan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Stewart?
Yes.
And Chair Barone?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
No problem, thank you. Excellent presentation. Okay, we'll bring it back to the commission and we'll move on to, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the old agenda. I don't have the new item. Is that C1?
Yeah, item C1, sure.
Okay, so I'll just open item C1 and hand it over to Scott.
Alright, thank you. I'm gonna, I have a brief PowerPoint presentation just to kind of track along with this. Let me share the screen here. Can you see the presentation or do I have it on the wrong screen?
I can see it.
Okay. So, well the item you had before this evening is sort of my request for a little bit of help. We are tasked with conducting an evaluation of our development review process, which is, basically involves the planning and building permit process. It involves the planning division, building division, our public works and engineering folks and fire. And every once in a while, it'll include our police department and our harbor department as well. It's always kind of a nice thing to do this every so often. I think in previous, you know, lives of working elsewhere, I've done it a couple of times. The last time was right around the time that we came out of the recession. So it's good to kind of figure out where you're at and maybe, you know, figure out things that you can do better and that type of thing. So looking for a little bit of help from the Planning Commission, maybe a couple of you would be willing to assist me with this. That would be to form a Planning Commission Subcommittee. We'd probably have an initial one or two meetings to kind of set the groundwork about how we'll attack this with a larger group. And then we'd identify probably another five stakeholder-type members and bring them in. Those would be like architects, contractors, project facilitator-type folks that do business in the city. So they have, you know, some perspective about how it is to go through our process. And I would anticipate another three to four meetings with that group. So we'd have a total group that would include the two planning commissioners and then five sort of, you know, stakeholder-type folks. And looking at, you know, things that we could do to improve our service as it relates to our development review process. We do have several things that are underway now. I think you're familiar with some of them. But we are working on turning our project, current project tracking application, public facing. We've had to do a lot of work behind the scenes to make that happen, but we're getting to a point now where we can do that. That application is called City Works. We're also in the process, as you're all aware, of updating our general plan and local coastal program and zoning code. And you know, that whole entire update was all about improving our service and process. To make, you know, our codes and policies easier to read, to understand, to find, so you can get through a process, you know, and you know, without having to have a whole lot of interaction with the city and without getting a bunch of gotchas along the way, which you sort of get now if you don't interact with city staff. And then also, we're in the process, we have some grant funding right now. And I'm looking at acquisition of an application that would allow us to do electronic plan checks. I think that's kind of exciting and goes toward making us paperless potentially, which I think is kind of a good goal. We're also have some grant funding to improve some of our processes related to residential development and developing policies for residential by right. Which means you'd be able to come in and get a staff-level issued permit for say, up to 10 units. And then hand-in-hand with that would go the development of objective design guidelines. So that that type of project would have to meet certain specific design guidelines that the city would be comfortable with, so that it could be approved at say, a staff level as opposed to go to Planning Commission. Some of the possible improvements, and this is a couple that I kind of put down off the top of my head, you know, putting this together before the meeting, was potentially, you know, improvements would look like revising and simplifying our application process. With a very long application, if you haven't seen it, it's kind of complicated and might be good to break that up. And we've done a little bit of work in looking at what some of the other cities in the county are doing, or even the county itself. And I kind of have a matrix of those things put together that the committee can take a look at. I had an idea about potentially implementing yearly customer service training for our staff. So that we interact in a more positive manner with the public, you know, that's, I think that's always worthwhile. I've done that in the past as well. And then maybe just looking at what are the other options, other than what I've already spoken to you about, how we could reduce review times, because that's always the complaint, right? We're not fast enough. People always want us to issue permits and process applications more quickly. And so that's kind of what we're looking to do. That's the kind of process I've sort of come up with in my head anyway. Certainly happy to, if I can get a couple of you to sign on, to sit down with you and flesh all this out and then to go form the larger committee to kind of do the work. So with that, I'm going to stop sharing my screen and turn it back over to the commission for questions or comments or those types of things.
Perfect Scott, thanks. Alright, Jen, I saw your hand.
Thanks Jesse. Scott, great job. I have a question about, you know, when you're reviewing what it is that you need to review or coming up with your ideas. Is any of this based off of the survey that was put out by the city with, you know, the issues that people are concerned about? I'm sure you saw that survey, the results that came in. I think it was 20, was it 2019? I think was the last one that was sent out and people participated and basically talked about what their priorities were for our city and what they wanted to see improve and all the so on and so forth. Did that play into this at all?
Yeah, I mean, this is a, you know, this is a desire of the city council to have us look at this. We had the chamber put out a survey, kind of, you know, touching base with folks about, you know, what it was like to go through our process and, you know, and honestly, didn't rate that highly, but again, not surprising given the type of survey that was sent out. We can use that as a starting point, I think. Always good to have a better perception of you than a worse perception. So I think starting with some of the information that was gleaned from that survey would be useful for us. And would go a little bit of the ways into, you know, getting us started in the conversation anyway.
I think this is great. I'm excited that you're proposing this, so I just want to say that.
Thank you.
Very good Jen. Anybody else? Bill? I just second what Jen said. I think it's great. Thanks Scott for doing it. And if I could be of help as an architect, I'm happy to be a part of the working committee, the working group.
Appreciate that.
I'm really pleased to see this too. And I appreciate the staff being so willing to take what may have been a little bit of harsh criticism and go with it. I sometimes think, you know, there's definitely some current stuff we can work on and I think there's a lot of stuff from the past that people like to sort of rehash and not realize that we have made some progress. I would, I know Jesse, you're a busy dude, but I would really like to see you be on this committee just because you have a lot more on-the-ground experience with the process and development issue and kind of from the more technical side. And I think Bill, of course, being an architect would be a natural fit as well. I'm sure any of us, you know, would be interested and enjoy it, but I do see the fit is good. So I don't know if you've got time Jesse, but it's not going to take that much.
Sure, sure. Yeah, yeah, I appreciate the vote of confidence. I think we all bring different things to the table and I think you're right. I think it's kind of a natural fit for Bill and I to maybe jump into those roles. I mean, you guys, Jen and Susan, you guys definitely bring things to the table that we need and, you know, also. So anyway, so those are my comments. I would be happy to help out Scott.
Appreciate that.
I'm really excited to see electronic. I've been, you know, in the industry 15, 16, well 17 years now. I've been a huge proponent of moving things electronic my whole career. I mean, 2004, 2005, we were doing these things in Kern County when I was there. And yeah, I'm stoked to see that we're trying to, you know, move things in that direction, whatever I can do to help. I would love to be a part of this. So yeah, whatever you think, so.
I appreciate it. Sounds like, you know, we have Jesse and Bill willing to put their hat in the ring to help. I appreciate that. I think because this was a business item, we might want to take public comment.
Oh yeah, sorry.
You have two folks in the queue, guessing-
Good, good call.
Sean Green's one of them.
Thanks for bringing that up. Anthony, if you could let us know who's first or if there's anybody. Actually, I don't see anybody's hand raised. Sean or-
Actually, Sean Green just raised his hand. Let me go ahead and bring him up.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay Sean, you are unmuted.
Well, I wasn't going to speak, but Scott called me out, so I had no-
You're welcome Sean.
No, I think this is a great thing and I, you know, it partially stems from the chamber survey, which I think Susan's right, that, you know, there's a lot of these old ideas that are still in people's minds. And so this is nothing but a good thing. I did mention to Scott, I don't know if this is something that would be interesting to the committee, but I have a small commercial project that's nearing plan check-ready over on Scott Street near the Vets Hall. And I, you know, I would be interested in volunteering it up as a kind of case study. Probably to keep most of it, you know, just internal with the Subcommittee until you're ready to release your findings or whatever. And that would kind of track alongside timeline-wise with your meeting. So if I can be of any assistance there, I'm happy to participate.
Perfect Sean, thank you for those comments. Anybody else wishing to speak to this item? Ms. Crawford?
I do see a hand raised for Ms. Erica Crawford. Just a moment. Okay Erica, you are unmuted.
Hey there, in the nick of time, I'm sorry. It took me a minute to get online here. Let me just mute my TV. Woefully underprepared. I just wanted to speak in full support. I'm just so thrilled that this is moving forward and to let you know that it's really been a pleasure to get to know the staff at the planning department, community development, incredibly diligent workers and under great leadership. And these things are hard, you know, looking at processes, hard, it's time consumptive. And I just, tons of kudos to move forward and the chambers here to support you as you go through this in any way we can. So thank you. Thanks Scott.
Perfect. Thank you for those comments. Let's see, we'll give it a couple more seconds here. Does anybody wants to type in at the last minute like Erica did or going once, going twice? Okay, seeing nobody, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the commission. Okay, does anybody else have anything else to add before we, I don't even know what we do here, we just-
I think everybody's in agreement. We don't have, that doesn't have to be a formal motion to set it. I think we just have agreement among the commission that the two committee members that will help out with this will be yourself, Tricia Brown and Bill Roshan.
Perfect. Okay, well that was an easy meeting to administer, so. Alright, we'll move on, close that item C1 and go to unfinished business. I don't think we have any. Move on to Planning Commissioner comments, future agenda items. Does anybody wish to speak to this? Ms. Stewart?
I'll just say real quick, I really always appreciate Sean Green's comments. He is such an asset to this community. And, you know, there's a number of people who do that, you know, put out the time and effort in public comment and send us emails and there's other things he's commented on and, you know, even if you don't always agree, it's always articulate and well thought out and most of the time, I think I do agree. So thanks Sean Green for being there with us and same goes to Erica, what an asset to our community. Brought a whole sort of new life to the chamber and the relationship between the business community and the city. So kudos to those guys. It's not really a, you know, any kind of Planning Commissioner comment and future agenda item, but just thanks to those people for being there.
Jen?
Can I piggyback on that? Because I was just talking to a few friends about this the other day, about how many times when people come to do public comment, it's typically, you know, it's to oppose, which is great. We want, you know, it's part of democracy. But it's not always friendly and it's not always respectful. And I just really appreciate when we have a respectful disagreement or if you come simply for support. I think it's really important for our community to step up and to do that and we can do it civilly. So anyway, I just, I just thank you so much for participating tonight, Sean and Erica. And I hope we, you know, I look forward to a few further comments.
No, you have any? You run a great meeting, thank you. Thank you, I appreciate that. Vote of confidence. Okay, I don't have anything other than, you know, actually I just wanted to, I mean, piggybacking back on the C1 here. I hate, I probably should have brought it up while we had it open, but how are you planning on advertising or recruiting stakeholders in the community for that Subcommittee, Scott?
Well, I was gonna, I'm gonna talk with both you and Commissioner Roshan. I have some names of folks that we regularly interact with. I was gonna, you know, talk to you guys about that and kind of see if there's anybody else you thought might be worth adding beside the list that I put together. And then I was gonna go, you know, make some phone calls and see if folks are willing to serve. So that's always the question, you know, a lot of the, a lot of the folks in town, you know, do serve double and triple duty on commissions and things. So be curious to see, you know, what interest or availability there is from the list. And then moving forward, hey, it looks like we have Joe.
There he is.
Hey Joe, welcome.
Yeah, it's been an interesting experience. I just don't mean to disrupt your meeting, you know, but I'm here.
Ever, ever. Good to have you. We were just finishing up. We're actually on Planning Commissioner comments and future agenda items if you wish.
Oh, I missed all the fun stuff. I will.
Yeah, so anyway, we're there. Do you have anything you want to add to?
No, I mean, I've just, I was in favor, well however you guys voted, I mean, if you want to have more unanimity, I was in favor of extending the bicycle thing. And then I saw something about- saw something about if you needed somebody to be, oh, the Subcommittee. If you haven't picked somebody already, I'll lose Bill for that as well, so that's it.
Okay. We had, well, since you were absent, we had Bill and I on the Subcommittee, but, you know what? We can keep that fluid. I mean, if that, if things change, we can definitely know you're interested, so.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I don't care. It's fine, sure.
Yeah, well, let Scott hash out those details, and we were just talking about how we were going to recruit members of the public for, you know, stakeholders in the community. And, you know, I was an inspector on the North Coast for a long time, and it seems like you're the same group of core, you know, contractors and architects that kind of work in these little pockets. So, I mean, yeah, there's definitely, definitely a group of folks that you could pick from, and I'm happy to add names that I think would be interested. I'm sure it's probably very similar to your list and all that, so.
All right, sounds good.
All right, well, if we don't have anything else, I think we'll move to Community Development Director comments.
Yeah, this was, this was a pretty short, you know, suite meeting. Your next one, you'll have, at least for a couple of you, we are going to have two items on it. One of them will be a conceptual review of a project, looking to get some input from the commission related to architecture for a project that would be kind of at the corner of northeast, corner of First Streets and Harbor. There's kind of a slope there, you know, that runs down there, and we had the hotel proposed there a while ago. We have a different type of project coming back, much reduced, a lot less excavation, a lot fewer units, but kind of unique, and wanted to get some input from the commission before we started really rolling down the road with the application forum. So we will be bringing that, and that'll be the first time at least Commissioner Ford and Commissioner Rochen have seen that type of process play out. Cindy will be the one preparing a brief staff report for it. It'll be really more just to get some input from the commission, though, so. Those have always proven to be interesting for the commission when you've seen them, so I was forewarning you that it's coming. Other than that, I don't have anything else.
Very good. Quickest meeting of all time, I think. Thirty-four minutes, flat, so.
Great meeting.
Great meeting. All right, with that, I think we'll adjourn to our next regularly scheduled Planning Commission meeting on March 2nd at 6:00 PM via teleconference. Please join us if you can. Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.